Come meeting order, would you please leave some of the pleasantries?
I do have these to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, of the United States of Texas, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you everyone for showing up. Public comments, can we limit them to three minutes?
We need a roll call.
We did need a roll call, sorry about that. I skipped over it.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Manteray.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Alderman Rupert, Rupertus.
Repardis.
Repardis.
Aggressive.
Mayor Protein Green.
Here.
Mayor Maymore.
We have any public comments? Ms. Wilford?
Do you want to stand here or do we have to hear?
Here please. Just state your address.
Okay, my name is Taylor Wilford, we live at 16714 Marina Drive, and I'm here in support of limiting the parking from 10:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And there's a couple of reasons for it. I know we have a lot of renters, and it's a hardship on families that have renters and things like that. But one thing I found, we came and started living down here permanently in 2017, a lot of times late at night we'll have people that will park along the roadways, they may not necessarily stay at the houses, and it's a real difficulty on the narrow roads getting in and out of your own neighborhood because you've got cars parked on both sides of the street. I myself had to turn around one time when we were pulling, I was pulling a boat trailer because I couldn't fit down my own street to get back to my house because there were so many cars parked along the roadway. Additionally, in support of our police and our firefighters, I think it's really important that we have the ability for our firefighters and our fire trucks to go down our roads to get to our residents. We have a lot of elderly full-time residents that are here, and it does become a safety issue at that point. So I think if we would consider a way that we can look into parking, I'm not trying to limit in any way people that have rental property and things like that, but if at 10:00 PM people could move their vehicles to our city park area or to the area around our city town, or even, you know, the Jamaica Beach liquor store and things like that, we could deal with the overflow parking, or, you know, encourage people to be neighborly and ask to borrow your neighbor's park, your driveway if you've got extra parking and things like that. But we really need to start doing something. And the reason I feel very strongly about this, a couple of weeks ago I was driving on Caronco Way, and as you come on Caronco Way off Jolly Roger, I was going to see some friends of mine. There's a rental that's right there on the property, and they had a truck that was actually parked out in the street and then a vehicle around it. And I asked them if they would move their vehicles, very politely, y'all might move in vehicles because it's a hardship coming around here. Well, as I was leaving later that night, they hadn't moved the vehicles, and I was nearly hit head-on by another vehicle that came around going too fast and swerved into my lane of traffic because they couldn't see me because of how the traffic was. So especially with the number of children that we have that are out, you know, over the summer riding golf carts and things like that, we just need to be very aware of this. And I want to figure out the best neighborly way to take care of it. So that was my concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was on the list.
One more?
Two more.
Well, my name is John Springer, and our place is at 16522 Bahama Way. And I didn't realize Ms. Wilford was going to speak also, but I'm here to speak on the same subject. On our street, and I'm not here every month, I'm here maybe once every six weeks or a week or 10 days, but the last two months that we have been here, there had been times that our street has been, it's reduced to at least one lane, and occasionally I drive a half-ton pickup here. And a month and a half ago, to get down my street, I had to pull the mirrors in to get past the cars. And that concerned me at that time, that if we needed an emergency vehicle down that street, there's not a way in the world that one could have been, you know, dispatched down that street. And then what really brought my attention to this is Saturday night, when we had been out for a while and got back before dark, and the street was totally filled with cars. And past our street, they were past our house, and apparently the place being occupied was a couple of houses down. And they were parked on both sides of the street, and even one pickup pulled into the bar ditch with, you know, the tailgate back out. Then on Sunday night, as my wife and I started to go to bed, we could see lights as we went to the back of the house. Emergency lights, and we, of course, they were flashings close. I didn't know if it was a pattern or what. I looked out, and the house next door, there had been a medical emergency apparently. I don't know details, but there was an ambulance that was dispatched there. And the cars that I just arrived earlier were not there at that time, so consequently they could get emergency vehicles there. But had it been the night before, it would have been impossible to get, you know, the room needed there. And then what really makes me think about it is, my wife is not getting any younger. If I could help, you know, I'd like to get to my wife. It's too much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Yoda Ford, I live at 16526 Jamaica Cove Road. I'm not going to reiterate what they just said, but I'll tell you this, it makes me really mad when these people block my driveway. I've got three renthouses, real close, and they all the time park in the streets. I can't even get my golf cart out sometimes. So, we all know it's a safety hazard. Personally, for me, it's a pain in the butt when they block my driveway. I want to go out and whack them, but I can't. So, I wish the board would address the issue. I know it's unprecedented times because everybody wants to get out. They're tired of COVID, they're tired of being locked up, as we can see in our own neighborhood, in the traffic just here, not necessarily in town. So, it would be nice if you guys would come together with something and would say, hey look, you know, some renthouses got real short driveway, and you can only park like three cars or four cars there. Some houses have a long driveway like I do, I could probably put eight cars in my driveway. But, a lot of houses aren't that way. So, I would appreciate if you guys on the board would discuss this and come up with some variable solution that would be probably acceptable to everyone, but that's probably not going to happen. So, some solution would be better than none. That's all I can say right now.
Thank you.
Jessica.
Please.
Good evening. I have three items, so that's a very complex question. One is the parking, and I'm so glad to see us taking care of that. I would like to see possibly making it 10:30 because if you have a gathering, usually 10 o'clock is when it ends. People have to gather their things, say their goodbyes, things of that sort. But I'm all for no parking on streets. Also, I was wondering on the rehabilitation of the Blackbeard, yeah, I guess it's Blackbeard, lift station, were there three bids taken? And is that where we came up with the one for Mercer? And then on the police reserve, I don't understand why we're taking out background checks because it seems like that would be a necessary item. And the chief of police, the chief of police, from what I understand, reports to the mayor, so why does the city administrator pad in with that? So those, did I make my 30 minutes?
Yes ma'am.
Oh, I didn't stop there. Ginger Jones, 16612, Curley.
Yes.
Consent agenda. The following items are considered repeating by City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So, do I have a motion to accept?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes, both the regular and the city workshop dates May 17th and June 7th.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any objections?
Can I make a comment?
What do you call it?
Well...
Why not yet?
That's not a discussion on it.
We would have to...
Can I have a question?
Not been aware of. We could have an objection or a...
No, I just seconded it.
Yeah, it's true. You could be drawing your...
I'll draw. I'll, no, pardon me. No, I'll just get it, that's fine. I just have a question that I can wait for later.
Okay. Motion carries. Regular agenda items, discussion and possible action to approve the rehabilitation of Blackbeard Lift Station based on the single bid by Mercer Construction Company in the amount of $85,675 on attachment C. Do I have a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I believe the line item states that all is the Blackbeard Lift Station, we only got a single beard by Mercer Construction. I think we need to go out and ask for more bids on this project. It is a large number, and I know we have a great running rapport with Mercer Construction. However, on a project of this size, I think we should do our due diligence and ask for two additional bids on this project. So I would be opposed of this.
Anyone else?
My question is, how many bidders did we go up to?
Mercer Construction actually was the one soliciting the bid. I mean, most Mercer Engineering was the one soliciting the bid as per our vendor in this thing. They only got the one bid. In this bid, Alderman, the $85,000 was well outside what our prediction would be, our estimation would be on that project. It's 15 to $20,000 higher than what we have liked to see in that. And so, this project though, isn't one that gets a lot of bids because there's only very few folks in the area that do that kind of work. But I would have to agree with Alderman Repardis in that if we have to extend it out, then at least it gives the city an opportunity to get better bidding on it.
My question was, who did Mercer do that to?
They posted the bids like any other bids, and they advertised the bids like any other bids.
Through a newspaper or something?
Newspaper, internet, that kind of posting.
That's the only one that came in.
That's the only one that came in.
It says their bid and their qualifications, so they're making another bid.
They actually, there were no other bids. Yep.
Did we have a budget explained for this?
Yes, it is, and the estimated was again about 15 to $20,000 less. There is enough money to cover the 85,000 in the budget. It was allowed $150,000 for the entire pump projects.
The entire pump project, not just this particular location?
So you're looking at that one coupled with at least $25,000 over, so you're still well within the reserve of amount that Sean Hutchinson set.
Are we in trouble, or do we have time to rebid?
It's not an emergency.
We should have a question.
It is not an emergency.
How long have you been wanting to get this done though?
It's been needing to get done for quite some time, over a year. The secondary thing here, there is a pump that needs replacing in that lift station. If we can come, and that came in after we got the bid process. So, generally when you have that, we can actually work that into the process too and save some money doing that as well.
That's what I was going to ask, what is the... How much do we have to spend to put it out for bids again?
It's very minimal. Yes ma'am.
Any more?
No, they're finishing.
Yeah. I have a question.
I'm, you said about the accept here. We can, uh... Tell you until we look at it again.
Yeah, but you should...
But that's what we do.
Someone to change a motion to table. However, we do need to take some type of action if we're going to go through the rebidding process. We need to change the motion to rebid the actual project.
Now, I'll change my motion to rebid the lift station and get another bid if we can.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that's done.
Motion is to do rebid.
Do we have a vote?
I'm sorry, yes. Yes ma'am, I was going to go on the next one. May we have a vote?
To rebid?
To rebid, yes ma'am.
Yeah, I'm for it.
I vote to rebid, yes. I second the next one, so we go with it.
I vote to rebid.
Next. Discussion and possible action to approve the amendment of ordinance 21-05 and ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending ordinance 87-4, providing for additional no parking streets deemed necessary to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the public, providing for the repeal of all or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date by Alderman Manteray and its attachment. Have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
You're not with a second, are you?
Can I do that? My second emotion.
Alderman Jones, is that a motion to discuss?
Yes.
A motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Okay, moving forward to discussion.
I have been contacted by people like the Nittender meeting that were actually in opposition to it. Their family was raised here, and they utilize the street for parking, obviously in a safe manner, it's not taking up half of the street. I do believe that a lot of our streets are extremely narrow, and my biggest concern is emergency vehicles. I'm just not sure that 10 to 7 for every single street is the answer, is kind of where I stand.
I've got a bunch of people that contacted me also, and then I have some emails over here from Gordon Morris and Mary Morris that says that, you know, they don't want to see it either. You know, there's ways, I thank the police department and we'll ask police chief or the city administrator, I think there's quite a few ordinances already in place that if he knows about it, he can give out there. I mean, you have to call him and say, there's a problem, can you come help? And he will. So, I mean, I'm just saying that that's the people I'm in touch with that...
Well, I've had several people also contact me, and most of them have been in favor of this idea. Something that was brought up was that we have a lot of streets that are already no parking. That are culture to the beach, along Jamaica Beach Road. Several of them coming this way, and we're adding more tonight, that are already no parking streets. And, but with you, maybe if we start at 11 o'clock, so people have more time to have their family there. People who are going, we have, most of us have tiny homes anyway. We don't have the room to have people stay overnight. But that's not all the cases. But I think the emergency vehicles are the main reason people like this idea.
Well, I guess, I guess we're kind of, I've got a bunch of dogs, you know, so I'm just bringing out their concern too. If you're having somebody over, you've got three, four kids and grandkids, and you're having a party, you know, you don't want them to take off drugs. So you want them to stay, if some has to stay, and you don't have enough friends, you really hate to kick them out.
One of the things we talked about also is if we work on our short-term rental ordinance, that's the gist of what, most of what I'm hearing of the problem is the big rental houses where they're trying to cram as many people into those houses. I know we cannot make an ordinance that targets them, but within our short-term rental ordinance, perhaps, you know, they're per bedroom gets one car, whatever, there's a limitation.
They sign, they sign a contract when they rent, and it's like Gordon had said something about every, all of the ones that he takes care of, there could only be so many cars there. And if there's more than those cars, his guys have the authority to go in there and shut them down and let them move. So, you know, that could be, what he was saying was that could be a solution also was get the other short-term rentals to get with a patrol service to actually go by there and check out their compliance with the contract.
Do I have any other suggestions?
Oh, could I speak?
Oh, absolutely.
I've been keeping here quietly listening. I'm absolutely not in favor of rolling this into the short-term rental scenario. We have an opportunity to fix a problem. Not delay a problem. This is a reasonable solution to a real problem.
Well, then we ought to let the voters decide which, what they want.
Exactly.
If you could do it like that.
But anyway, our job in here in council is to try to set policies as best for this community. And that's, many of the people talking about this, when I ran for this office, and I listened to them. Okay? And it is a real problem. This is a fair, equitable way for us to help our community. It's not fair to these people. Let me finish.
I'm sorry.
And that's it, basically. And this is our opportunity to really just not delay it, not shirk our duty, just go ahead and do the right thing. If we roll into short-term rentals, if we go all these other things, it's just going to completely delay. Thank you.
The one thing that we cannot do is to make a rule for short-term rentals that don't, won't apply to everyone.
Yes.
Any suggestions?
I want...
You have a question.
I received the same emails and public comments about this. Now, logistically, this just won't work. We don't have enough parking at these houses to obtain the amount of visitors they have overnight. Let me put something to bed. I have served this community for over a dozen years on the fire department. Not once in a dozen years have we not been able to get to a house. Never. And, trust me, every one of our firefighters, we want a car blocking the road because every firefighter's dream is to pass that water over. So let me put that to rest. Secondly, I have talked to not only the chief of police, but several other officers about this, and they are in agreement with me. We don't need to add any other regulations or change what we have. What we need to do is enforce what's already there. How we do that is communication, not via social media. Call the non-emergency number and report it. An officer will show up, ask them to move it. If they don't move it, we'll have it towed. All right? So we need the citizens' help, we need to be made aware of these situations. But if we tell people they can't have somebody over past 10:30 at night, that's ridiculous. And also, this is not just an SDR problem. We have many residents that entertain quite often and entertain way past 10, 11 o'clock at night. So I'm absolutely opposed to this in my opinion. Thank you. Anything else?
I want to agree with both Alderman Manteray and Jones in that the short-term rental ordinance cannot be in any way, we cannot have any kind of parking regulation there. We can make a suggested parking home premises, and that's it. Secondly, I want to totally agree with Alderman Repardis because in the six and a half years that I've been here, we have never had a situation where a firefighter, police officer, or ambulance to get to a location and so also being, a road being blocked. We have, as the police and interim chief, O'Quinn, I would like him to step up and actually give his opinion as well because he's out there right now looking at the stuff. When we have a situation, and when the officers are seeing blocked roads, they try to get the owners of the vehicles out there to move the vehicles, and if they don't move, we commonly tow those vehicles off because they're blocking a roadway. There are laws on the books right now that would cover anything outside of legal parking. And basically, if we do put a timestamp on the parking, that would prevent you from legally not blocking the road and park in front of your house because it's considered on-the-street parking. And so, I feel that that would be kind of overexerting the power of the ordinance. And again, if we have road-blocking situations, if we have driveway-blocking situations, if cars are parking in private drives, the solution is the police don't respond to it and address that situation. Chief?
Okay, go ahead, but I want to respond to this when you're finished.
So, like Brad was just saying, I've been here since 2013. I've worked here, and honestly, I've never been able not to get to, or my officers get down to a situation on any street. And like what Russell, Alderman Repardis said, you know, we need to be called. If there is a situation out there that's happening, like y'all were saying, you're someone blocking your area? Call us, I mean, let us know. You know, we will go out. We can write, you know, parking on roadway, you know... call us. I mean, let us know, you know, we will go out. We can write, you know, parking on roadway, um, you know, there's all kinds of citations we can write, you know, to move these vehicles. I mean, it's not a problem. We like doing it. In my report today, you'll hear that I have a hundred and ninety-five citations in one month. We like writing citations. So, I mean, if it's a situation, let us know. We'll take care of it.
How many cars have you towed?
Uh, this month?
For that offense?
Not, not for that offense. We have not. We haven't had any situations called into us for that offense.
Did you see him out there?
We did.
Riding around?
We write in citations, yes, and we make them move. We don't allow tow vehicles. That's a last resort.
I'm with you, but so how many citations have you written specifically?
I have to pull the report, but I mean, we have especially one officer who loves to write.
And I'm for you guys, but I'm, is that, I have to mention this.
I can get you the numbers, but we have, I will guarantee you, we probably have written in, so in May, we probably have written at least forty-ish parking tickets for parking violations on the streets. Parking wrong way, facing traffic, parking on roadway, things of those.
Parking on roadway is a picture.
Well, parking facing the wrong direction is also on the roadway. It just means that they were parked in the wrong, yeah. But yes, we, I mean, we don't mind writing citations and making people move. You've got to contact us and, and when we see it, we, we do.
Thank you. I got one, can I?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say one thing in that regard. You need to keep in mind, and I don't know, what percent of the streets right now, Brad, twenty-four hours is absolutely no parking? Absolutely no parking.
What percent of the streets? Very, it's very low percentage. Obviously fifteen percent or?
You think it's just fifteen percent?
Or less.
Because you have, we have to remember that all the streets, am I correct, on the south side?
Thirty.
About thirty oh five?
You're, you're, you're looking at Jamaica Beach Road, you're looking at Beach.
The city corporate limits of Jamaica Beach.
Yeah, Jamaica Beach Road, uh, and, and Beach Comer.
Is everything over there south of thirty oh oh five?
It's up there's only three streets there.
Yeah, but.
Or if, if you want to consider West Road.
Including, yeah, including, all of those are no parking.
Correct.
And with, with the additional ones you're adding?
Those, there are no additional ones from, that, that's in this, the, all the, the only thing in this ordinance, the only thing added was the no parking under section, under section three, that last paragraph. That is the only thing added. There is no, there are no other streets added to this order.
There was a new section that included every street.
That, that, that section, section three is, is, is all the, all, all the way up to and all remaining streets and corporate city limits in Jamaica Beach from ten P M. to the next day at seven A M.
Is this north and south sides of Jolly Roger Road, west of, nearby to Bob Smith?
That, 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 that's, that's been in the ordinance. That's all this has, has been as the ordinance. That, that's all, that's all approved ordinance. It's already been in the.
Remaining of the extrusion, all remaining public streets, right down hall. To differentiate between, even I wanted to say all remaining of public streets, which is to differentiate from those that require twenty-four hour no parking to those that would just have some limitation.
It has been here. Jamaica Beach Road, West Road, Beach Comer, and their entire, it's already in here. Let's do it that way.
Yeah, yes. The only thing that we were looking at amending in the ordinance was your suggestion to do the overnight parking from ten P M. system. That's, that's the.
I just wanted to point that out. So, I mean, here we have these narrow streets and a problem, so that's the end of my comments.
Any more discussion? Yep. I would say all in favor, raise your hand.
I'm in favor.
All opposed?
Okay.
Motion failed.
Yes, it is.
Discussion of possible action to approve the amendment of ordinance twenty twenty-one over two and ordinance in, of the city of Jamaica Beach, amending the Dune Protection and Beach Plan of the city of Jamaica Beach and as amended to provide additional definitions and standards for the regulating access and parking on the beach. To provide violations and penalties, to provide for several, several ability, to provide for the repeal of all or parts of ordinance in conflict here within and to provide for the effective date. Altmann Madre. Put up Altmann Madre. Do I have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to discuss the decision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second to discuss.
Okay, in discussion.
Could you start us off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Yes, sir.
Actually, this one got tagged with me. I, I, I had intended another agenda item and that was the pay beach issue. Uh, I wasn't really ready at this time to come forward with that plan. And, uh, this got put into agenda. I discussed this with Brad and I, in retrospect, I thought this was more important than my agenda item. Okay? This is more important. But what I just, what it doesn't say, and I wish that we all have to understand is that what we're doing is eliminating the pedestrian beach that we have. And, and I think this is a good thing. I think it's the right thing to do. Um, you ride down there, you come down to the end of Western limit of the boundary of our beach. There's a big sign there that says, anything past this is a pedestrian beach. What we did is we created a small pedestrian beach right beside a really big pedestrian beach. And we need this space to park cars. If we do this, this is why I'm for this. I think it's a good thing. If we do this, it's going to eliminate congestion and confusion and, you know, the people trying to carton the rules and it's just going to make a safer, more solid beach. That's it.
Any one more?
Can I just request a little bit please?
Yes, Brad.
Could, could you give us your comment and your definition of this? We're, we're a little bit, I, I want to be clear on it. I'm not sure.
Yes, sir. Uh, so what, what this ordinance would do if, if, if indeed it's passed tonight, uh, we'd be eliminating the pedestrian beach, which is in front of the Beach Comer addition. And in that addition, probably about fifty percent of it would be a no parking allowed because that would be where the safe turnaround zone is. And, and then, uh, obviously you would have, basically you would have parking all the way from where it is now in front of the boardwalk area and at the first section uh, of the Beach Comer area, you would have additional parking on the beach. So, uh, forty to sixty cars minimum, uh, that you would probably be adding uh, to what is, uh, parking on the beach now. Uh, on Saturday afternoon between twelve thirty and two thirty, um, I counted the cars on the beach and there were approximately, um, a hundred and fifty-seven. And I found during that time, there were approximately eight, six to eight, depending on the size of the cars, uh, spaces available at where the existing parking is now. Uh, GLO, uh, basically based on the size of our beach, it is, is requiring us to have a minimum of about a hundred and fifty cars. So anything above that, obviously GLO would, uh, would approve because they're, they're not trying to restrict the vehicles on the beach. They're trying to increase the amount of vehicles on the beach.
We're doing this design, we're basically cutting, what we're trying to do is cut out the three-point turn.
Exactly. Yes, sir. Um, we, we, regardless of this passes or not, um, if this doesn't pass, the current, um, configuration is there is a pedestrian beach in front of Beach Comer and there's going to be a safe turnaround zone in front of the boardwalk. What this is doing is just extending this another five hundred feet west.
So getting rid of the pedestrian only and pushing the turnaround, turnaround zone.
Right.
Is this place?
That's correct.
So it's only, it's seven hundred thirty, it's only be three hundred thirty?
The, correct, the turnaround zone will be about three hundred, two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty. Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, have we even got our, our plan with our pedestrian beach and turnaround implemented yet?
No, sir.
That's what I was kind of going with, like why, we've just got our beach plan going in April for this year. So I'm not willing to really jump the gun and make amendments on something that we don't even have implemented as our map.
We haven't even given this to try.
Well, GLO wants this, right?
No. GLO. I thought, I thought Brad, you, this actually, this is your thing. And I, I thought that my understanding was what, what we're really trying to do here, guys, is not plead to GLO, just to make our beach less congested and less confusing and have a better, safer turnaround and utilize the pedestrian beach. It's just right there. And with there's a big pedestrian beach, we don't want.
Right there.
You don't want to walk on their beach.
We don't want more cars.
Oh, no, we got a limit of cars. I'm not saying more cars. I just.
That's what it does.
Brought them out.
No, just to spread out.
That's what I understood you were getting at.
Well, it allows more parking spots and we're not doing well controlling the parking spots that we have. I mean, I know you guys are giving it your all, but hot dog, I was out there Thursday and our trash cans are already full. We have a trash problem. We have a, a traffic problem. We have a lot of problems out there.
Well, the truck problem, we're trying to address by having some type of.
This will help.
Three-point turnaround.
Well, we already had a safe turnaround zone in our plan that we implemented in May, but we haven't actually implemented it yet.
You have something, John?
Yeah, I mean, every weekend or every other weekend, I'm out there working the beach. I've been such. When you're talking about adding more cars, when you talk about moving that zone all the way down, all you're doing is adding more vehicles on our beach, giving us more problems that we have to deal with at the police department. Because that'd be more visitors on our beach that we're dealing with. Um, I mean, we're working it right now. What we have in place, when we had an issue with parking, we have the west end dead end. We call it the deadhead over there. When we notice that the west end is getting full, we have all our officers, three officers on the beach and they have radios. They communicate. One officer posts up at Buccaneer and the sand. They point everybody east towards the state park. One officer that's in that zone is constantly patrolling. If there's any parking spaces that are available, they relay that to the officer that's stationed at Buccaneer. That way we can let cars come in on the west end. Then we point everybody to the east. In the east they go and they have the entrance at Buccaneer and the exit at Fifteen Mile. So that's how we can control it right now and that's the, the best way we can. It, it's just so many people. Just for example, July, uh, the Fourth of July, I'll have seven officers. I will have seven officers on the beach between the beach and city. Uh, both the third and the fourth. Because we are predicting from like we saw on Memorial Day, we are staffing accordingly. So.
And how would these changes affect you by allowing more vehicles on there?
A lot more problems.
Like a lot more.
Because the more people on the beach, the more problems.
Well, does it mean you have, I mean, you declared what, a hundred and twenty-five people?
There's a, there, the GLO is accepted of a hundred and fifty or more. Uh, and.
And then our short span that we have right now, we already have over a hundred and fifty. You start putting more out there.
I'm not saying put more. I'm taking.
If you add more spaces, you are adding more people. If you add more spaces, you're adding more people.
Yeah, don't spread out.
If, if you spread it out, you're still adding more people.
Yeah, I thought it would.
No, it doesn't help.
That, that beach will be, um, filled with as many parking spaces as you have on every holiday weekend. And so if you have, if currently we have a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty parking spaces, we're going to have a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty cars. If you have two hundred parking spaces, you're going to have two hundred cars. You're going to have as many.
And turning some away.
And still turning them away.
And, and even currently right now, when it gets bottlenecked and they start turning folks away, then it's still, it's a, it's almost a constant all-day thing until it gets later in the day or whatever in the volume of folks wanting to come in. Now, uh, folks, I, I, the, the pedestrian beach, is it needed or not? Let me make a comment on that. Uh, Saturday was the biggest day I've ever seen with about seventy people there. Mayor Morris was there later that evening and there was only a handful of folks up there. Uh, most days, there's no more than about thirty to forty people at the most in the pedestrian beach. So it's not being utilized like that. Uh, the truth is, the only, uh, advantage of having a pedestrian beach right now, it limits the amount of cars that's going to guard the beach.
And it's better to put it.
And it's better to guard, there you go.
But the dog carts would still go down.
Okay, now.
No.
They can't go past the ballers unless they're ADA.
If you guys come up with a, a fee plan one day, that is really when I would heavily suggest that you eliminate a pedestrian beach if you have a, a permanent beach with a, or a free beach. Because at that point in time, you really do need to have the additional cars to be in, access that area.
Well, again, I, I, I'd hope to get that on this agenda, but I will bring it to the workshop and try to get it on the next Kansas meeting.
Yeah, we have less workshop. We have a lot of discussion about that.
We, we've had that on the agenda for years and every time we try to do it, it costs way too much money. There's not enough beach. You, you're going to, you're going to have at least three or four lifeguards that you've got to pay all the time. You've got, uh, at least two people to run the, the front of it for a full-time job and, uh, because they're, and all those are going to have to have vacation, uh, four oh one A for, you know, a, a deal for the, uh, workers and we don't have that much beach.
Are we having a subject?
You know, I have to ask this, um, like I say, I want, I want it to be on the agenda and the guy said it could be on the agenda, but it didn't get on the agenda. It's okay with me. What I'm going to say is that I will bring it to the next workshop and I ask council, let me take a shot at this. That's all. At developing, uh, uh, and I'll do it on an unbiased basis, absolutely unbiased basis. And I will crank the numbers. Okay? And I'll present it to you. Fair enough?
So, uh, anyone else?
Do you have a?
You have to go.
Most of them.
Yep, do whatever motion.
And just us?
Yep.
Do we vote?
No.
So we should have a motion? Okay.
Next, uh, discussion of possible actions to approve the amendment of ordinance ninety-five dash O three A. An ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach that's amending the establishment of additional stop streets and providing penalties for failing to comply with the provisions of the ordinance. Altmann Madre.
Can we open it for discussion?
Yep, um, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Do we open it for discussion?
Do I have a second?
Let's talk about it all second.
May the discussion begin.
My input for the discussion, I, when I was running for the office, have a lot of people come to me and they were concerned about speeding on Bob Smith and Jolly Roger. The predominant, most of them were concerned about Bob Smith. One of the residents answered, well, maybe, perhaps we could put a stop sign somewhere on Bob Smith to maybe slow the traffic. So I'm bringing that to city council, um, and asking that to put our, that our police chief in and look at, I could like to put this stop sign and we do it. We actually install. and look at a good place to put this stop sign, and we do it, we actually install it, and see if it helps. If it doesn't help, we take it out. Okay? That's all.
Do you have, John?
Can you address all three suggestions?
I'm just up here in case y'all wanna ask a question or whatever. If you're talking discussions, I'll be up here for your discussion. I, I do not believe that another stop sign on Bob Rogers gonna, or. Bob Smith is gonna stop anybody from speeding, speakers won't speed. I don't care if you put a three or four stop signs out there, it's heavier traffic enforcement from us, that's really the only thing that's gonna stop it. And we just have to increase our, our due diligence, I mean, we, we do patrol, we do try to catch speakers, and, and I, you know, we have officers that sit up at the park, you catch people running the stop sign all day long, tasking the test to it. Um, you know, we, we try to enforce this as much as we can, but we are not gonna catch all the speakers. But it's just heavier enforcement. There's another stop sign to do, we need to stop.
Understand it, and, and I think the residents on that other, on that side understand it, they just made this suggestion. I'm bringing it to city council. Due diligence is what I'm responsible for to do. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
I've, um, noticed in my travels, and, um, that some cities have got a lighted solar stop sign. And at nighttime, they don't put up a lot of light, solar powered, but it just blinks nicely to remind people to stop.
And that is a great thing, uh, uh, more visibility, I, I'm not opposed to that at all, I love visibility, that would be great. And, um, it's just a matter of looking at the costs and effectiveness, you know, but I mean, yes, that's, that would be awesome.
I would recommend whoever lives around there to get their approval.
Yeah.
See that blinking light outside.
Well, I wanna tell, for instance, the one of Jolly Roger where the park is, that's just gonna be Joe when he sleeps during the day anyway. But I just noticed that it got my attention, being in other communities, to remind him to stop at nighttime especially. So was there any other need for these other two locations, I guess is what I wanted to know.
That, that was part of the original ordinance, though the votes were not added, the only addition was the.
Oh, yeah, okay, awesome, okay.
Any other discussion?
Well, if not, I make the motion, if we're going.
You got a second?
Yeah, he's on his second.
That is for discussion.
Oh.
Do I have a second for a vote? It failed. Next item is discussion and possible action to amend City of Jamaica Beach Resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten. A resolution of City of Jamaica Beach establishing regulations for submitting, receiving, and processing requests for public information, otherwise known as open records, and providing rules and a standard operating procedure for public information requests in a public information policy. Alderman Jones was possible.
And I want to make a motion to discuss.
I have a second, I'm ready.
I'll make the motion, uh, do we have a motion to discuss?
I can play that.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
But I'll make the motion.
Oh.
Oh, I make a motion.
No, I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any, any discussions? Go ahead.
Um, actually, this is just standing operating procedure, we need to have not certain records. I suggest that it be our new city secretary, and, um, I believe, you know, if we, if you're supposed to take an oath, um, probably is. I thought so too, thank you. And, um, also at this time, I'd like to amend this to, because, um, I'm reading through lots of information as we, I read that the city is required, um, to establish a records management program under the Local Government Act, chapters two zero one through two zero five. This is by ordinance, and so if we could amend this to add this, um, and you would be, and have the secretary be that same person. Um, and I've got more information about it here, um, here, under here. It states, I found this on the KML, um, a city is required to establish a records management program under the Local Government Records Act, codified in chapters two zero one, two zero five of the Texas Local Government Code. Um, and there's lots more codes here, for you if you'd like to look at it. Is that? Can I ask you a question? Can you just tell me how this changes our previous ordinance? It just amends and adds a record, um, a records management program to it.
Is this one, do we need to have the order again?
Uh, first off, we can't amend a resolution to, to make an ordinance from it. Secondly, the city already has a records management program, the city secretary is right named as the official over the city records program. This is a housekeeping issue, because Crystal Dozier was our former city secretary, and she was named as our PIO. And now we just need to change that naming to, to obviously include Debbie Nesbit as the PIO, open records requests, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and then we will, as, as to that, the ordinance, I, I apologize for not bringing that information to you. It was after, uh, city hall had closed, and we couldn't amend the ordinance at, at that point in time, we couldn't have created a new ordinance at that time. But it's generically just like city secretary, given that she's named in that position, she's already named as the administrative officer.
And the, just an FYI too, cause I was trying to research what we were amending, or looking at that ordinance name on our website yet. From twenty nineteen? It's tops at nine? Does it go to ten?
Yep, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
Okay. And that's twenty nineteen? Yeah, ten.
Excuse me, move you right along here, it's good.
Yep, uh, make a motion for a vote?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
In favor of the housekeeping?
Of the housekeeping, uh, number, item number five.
Updating.
Let's hit it.
Up, updating, yes, yes, updating. As read. All in favor? Any opposed? It passes four and one.
Confused.
Next item, discussion for possible action to approve the amendment of ordinance twenty seventeen dash seven. An ordinance of the City of Jamaica Beach, Texas amending an establishment of the Reserve Police Department for the City of Jamaica Beach, Texas. Providing the methods and standards for appointment of reserve police officers. Providing the authority of the reserve police officer. Providing other provisions relating to the subject. Providing for the repeal of all parts of the ordinances in conflict here with, and providing an effective date. Sponsored by Mr. Hyman, attachment. Any, make a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Do I have a second?
I'll send it.
You wanna lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Hyman. Yes. Uh, basically, uh, the or, the ordinance that we currently have now calls for thirteen reserves, uh, when we were talking about earlier in the, the first of the year, when we were talking about the new plan for the beach, uh, we have tripled the amount of beach patrol officers, so therefore we need more warm bodies to be able to patrol. And so, uh, the increase from thirteen officers, which is what is, uh, approved for now, uh, needs to be closer to the eighteen officers. Uh, the youth officers do not cost money to the city anything other than some training hours and uniforms to put on the bodies. Uh, outside of that, um, the insurance or anything else is just basically by the hours of the officers that are working themselves.
Is there any other changes reflected?
No, sir.
Do, Brad, do we try?
Did they go in?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Um, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement has standards, and in response to what Ms. Jones had said earlier, uh, the reason that, uh, the background check was taken off is because it is a requirement by Texas law that certain standards of background investigations conducted on all police officers. Uh, that ordinance was written when we first established, uh, reserve officers, and back then, TCO did not have the requirement that they do now as far as background investigations. Uh, they even have a requirement as to the information that's in the files, whatever that information comes in, that kind of thing. And they are required to have minimum training, and obviously, they're required to have at least minimum training in, in service every year too. Every two years, there's a new training cycle, and each officer has to have a minimum of forty hours, but we exceed that in, in every training cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Uh, may I have a motion to vote?
I would like to make a motion to approve the amendment as stated.
Second.
All in favor? Ian? Uh, may we have the city administrator?
No. Being that we're, we're kinda going a little bit longer tonight, I, I do have a report, I, I have a report to, uh, to address council. And thank you very much so for several things. First off, for putting up with me in the interim period, and especially when I'm going crazy, uh, when we have a, a change in key staff members. Um, we happen to have the privilege of having a, a lady by the name of Debbie Nesbit put in an application with our city. And you guys have the foresight and the intelligence to place her into this position, and I, I just wanna tell you, it's been a phenomenal time. In a very short period of time, uh, Ms. Nesbit is, is completed a month's worth of work in a week's time. So, uh, I gotta tell you, my hat's off to you, council, and to you, Debbie, thank you so much for everything that you did.
Mayor's report? Alright, since we're running along, I will have one. Alderman's report?
I'm just happy to see at the park, we got the shrubs and stuck shrubs trees that were no longer with us, removed and trimmed down and everything, it's looking really good. Um, I have a couple requests from citizens, I have a couple games to add to the park, so I'll be putting in for that. I don't really have a, a volunteer group that's super active, cause it was like the same three people every time, but, um, it's probably about time that we start reeling that back in, and we'll get that fueled up. That's all I have. No report?
No report? I don't have, I don't have any responsibility.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that we lost a really nice, um, member of our community. His daddy's pictures back there, the second mayor of Jamaica Beach, Jack Jordan, uh, passed away Friday. Uh, sixty-two, excuse my goddamn, at all, and, uh, I just wanted to say something about him.
Okay, I'm gonna be super quick and cut this thing down. Um, Jack Jordan, keep this family in mind in your prayers, thank you, Woody. Um, I wanna welcome Debbie aboard to our new family, really excited, and already within a week, I've heard excellent reviews from her coworkers and staff. Okay, um, council, we need to get on the same page, we need to focus. We do not have five different directives going at crap. We already have projects going on and problems and issues we need to focus on. So we need to get together and focus, we, we can't just be throwing all these different things. The, the city needs the mechanics worked on, the municipalities, our wastewater, our water feed, the, the tree mechanics. We're also in a problem, we don't have current SOGs, SOPs, procurement. I screwed it up. But we need to get back to basics, so we really need to get better and focus on this, alright? Please contact me, contact any one of us, there is no reason that tonight's agenda, we, we could have workshopped and, um, skipped over that. We need to be a team, alright? Um, on that same note, Ms. Rizzo, myself, and many others, we have worked on the policies and procedures for the employee handbook, as well as the job descriptions over the last several years, we turned that in last week, I would like you guys to review, and I would like that to get submitted ASAP. Okay, we're currently functioning with an outdated policies and procedure app. That is it, thank you everybody for coming, great to see such a turnout.
Police report?
Thank you, Mayor, it's Coleman. So, this report for me, uh, projects that we have currently going on still is the body camera project, which has been ongoing for a while. Uh, we're still looking for any type of granting opportunities, things of that nature, it's just gonna get us more body cameras for our officers uh, on the scene, or on the street end on the beach, uh, so I'm still looking for granting opportunities. Uh, T-Mobile Wireless project, I was contacted by T-Mobile Wireless, they actually have a new program for government, uh, to allow us to get cell phones, uh, not cell phones, SIM cards, on a plan, uh, for very, very reasonable, which is zero, uh, per month, uh, on certain plan. So, I'm working on that project right now, I've tested out a phone from them, and I've got a couple of their phones now that I'm, uh, testing out for coverage, range, you know, uh, you know, things of that nature. Uh, the third project that I have on here is basically planning and, uh, research for the League City Consortium software. Uh, I think I spoke about this before, uh, the League City Consortium is who we belong to for the police department. Uh, it, it encompasses GPD, League City, uh, a lot of other police departments, and it's what we use for our software. Uh, it's very outdated, and they're sunsetting it, and so there's, uh, a project in League City that they are looking at new vendors. Uh, so I'm still following them in meetings, we haven't had another meeting since. But I just wanna keep it on here, because I need to keep y'all apprised, cause it is gonna be a cost increase from what we currently pay yearly. So, I wanna make sure y'all are aware of it. Uh, police activity, we had thirteen new cases in May, we had four traffic accidents, one theft, one more arrest, two public intoxications, one criminal trespass, one criminal mischief, two found properties, and one that's currently under investigation. Uh, we have no personnel issues to discuss. Uh, beach enforcement and beach patrol, we talked about a little bit earlier, um, we did learn some lessons from, uh, the Memorial Day, uh, weekend, and as I informed you a little bit earlier, in July, for the July Fourth weekend, we will be having seven officers. We'll have three officers on the beach, plus the day officer, the flex officer, and a lap over officer. So, uh, you know, we will have plenty of coverage for this, between the beach and the city, uh, during that period, third and fourth. And then on Monday, the fifth, we will actually still have beach patrol officers, three officers on the beach, plus our day, our mid-shift and our night shift, so. Um, traffic enforcement, like I said earlier, we have written a hundred and ninety-five, nineteen, nine hundred and ninety-five citations in May alone. Um, in Alderman, uh, uh, Ma, Matt Ray, Matt Ray. Uh, if you ever want.
Just Gil.
Gil. If you want to ever come up and, and, uh, talk with me, I can break out a report for you and let you see the percentages like we discussed earlier, just if you ever curious, uh, I can do it. But, uh, we do write a lot of our tickets for speeding, a lot of our tickets for parking, a lot of our tickets are, uh, different various, you know, citations for, you know, Marina and everything else, so. Uh, that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Briefly speaking for the fire report, uh, don't forget the July third dance for the fire department at the city park.
Pleasure.
Other than that, I guess we're gonna go into executive session. And, and ask everybody to leave at seven, seven ten.
Y'all leave right there for us.